But, no, I, my understanding is that this is the one and only location that's being requested.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Mr. Sad.
I'm gonna have to lean on my colleague, Mr. Plasko. He's got a lot more years than most of us here do on this matter from nineteen, 2016. But you feel comfortable with all this, Bill?
Yeah, I think for some reason, some people may want to oppose it, but based on the laws and the situation where we are, I think it's what we have to do, should be doing. And I think the agreement is pretty simple and straightforward. But the dealings we had with Julie Silverman and his clients, they're in a good place.
And you would like to maybe just ask for a framed opening or let us know what your operation is? That would be awesome.
We would love that.
Thank you, sir.
And they are intending fully to be running both medical marijuana, this is a little change, to strictly recreational. The medical, there's still a place for it and a reason for it. From their perspective, the concern is it may not be enough to survive without the recreation. And that's why they're looking to do it. And the law's on their side. And so, and everything else they're proposing is a plus. We've had no problems with the establishment. See no reason to try to avoid it.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lane?
Sorry, just one more. Has there been any talk about maybe how many jobs this would create?
Phil will probably speak to that. There were several jobs there. I think some have been lost, but obviously he'll be standing on this time, Bill.
Yeah, I, I think there's probably very, you know, if, if there's five to eight right now, I'd be surprised. It's probably more along the lines of 12 to 16 jobs, something along those lines.
A few more.
Obviously, it depends on, you know, how busy it gets, but, you know, I, I look at this, I don't think this is gonna be a crazy busy store, you know, with, I mean, we just don't see stores with big traffic issues anymore. That's kind of a thing of the past. But I think you'll see a healthy number of customers here because you do have several towns nearby that don't have any of these dispensaries. And I think you'll see people who are now going to other towns, well, some of them will come here. So, you know, I, I think it'll be 12 to 18, could be a little bit more.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Does Middlesex, is this the only operation that they operate, or do they have other facilities in other towns?
Well, they have a cultivation facility out in western Massachusetts. I think it's, actually it's in Fitchburg. And they, I believe are opening, planning on opening one up in Waltham as well.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Looking at the host agreement, and it appears that what we're looking for, Mr. Doolica, correct me if I'm wrong, is a motion to authorize Tony Mazuko as our town manager to sign on behalf of the town of Norwood?
That is correct.
Authorize, make a motion to authorize and direct the general manager to sign the documents to implement the agreement with the host, community agreement with MIM.
Do I have a second? We'll go Mr. Lane on second. And all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Doolica, and thank you, Mr. Sad.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to use your clean time card tomorrow?
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Good night. Good night, now. We have a couple of minutes before our 7:00 PM public meeting, so if the members...
Mr. Chairman, before your next appointment, I just want to let you know we had an audio technical difficulty, so that's why you have the new microphone. It's all set now. Just wanted to let you know.
Thank you very much. We have to hope that the audience can lip read, in other words.
I swear.
So, again, we have just a little more than five minutes before our 7:00 PM public meeting. I suggest we've done item one and item two. Under new business, I'm just gonna go into new business. Meeting scheduled for November and December, and I can pull up a calendar here. I thought it might be a good opportunity for us to talk about what we'd like to plan for our meetings in those months, given we're getting into, believe it or not, holiday period. Normally, in November, and Christine, you correct me if I'm wrong, we would meet on the 12th and the 26th of November. The 26th happens to be two days before Thanksgiving, so I'm wondering whether or not we would like to alter our dates for the November meetings, consider perhaps having only one meeting, or perhaps consideration for a second meeting on a, on a date other than the 26th of November. Is there any input from the board in terms of, I'm trying to recall what we did last year in 1999?
Paddles start hooking until the 25th, so it never works for other people.
Are people...
No conflicts throughout November for me on Tuesdays.
Okay. Are people satisfied they could meet on the 26th if necessary? Maybe we can keep, being a holiday week, it might be a...
But then, I'm okay. We'll keep it.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just sensitive to the fact that some, some folks might be traveling that week, but it looks like we're good for this. So, we're good on November for those dates, the 12th and the 26th, Christine. And December, our normal timing would be the, the 10th and the 24th, if our folks are willing to meet on December the 24th.
I think so.
The 10th and the 24th. Is there any, is there any issue if the board determined that perhaps, given the time of the year, we should focus on having one meeting? Well, actually, let's take a look at this more closely. We actually, the 24th is Christmas Eve, and actually, January 31st, December 31st is New Year's Eve. Is there any...
Typically, we've had just one meeting.
Just one meeting.
But I wonder if we wanna make it the following week here?
I propose the 17th.
More to the middle of the month instead of the 10th?
That sounds good.
The 17th for a meeting.
So with that, Christine, we will plan for one meeting in December on the 17th. You won't have to be here on the 24th or New Year's Eve either. Lucky you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. A couple more minutes. Item 4.2, it's a warrant for state election, submitted by Mary Lou Folon, town clerk, submitting for signature of the board the warrant for state election. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Ms. Groh, Mr. Sad, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You're unanimous. Item 4.3, a one-day liquor permit from Castle Island. Submitting a request for a one-day liquor permit for a haunted brewery slash Halloween event at Castle Island, 31 Astor Avenue on Saturday, October 26, 2024, from 4:00 PM until 11:00 PM with approximately 100 guests expected. The request is, is to extend liquor license outside the bay doors for an event at the taproom. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Sad makes a motion. Mr. Lane has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You're unanimous. 4.4, a one-day liquor permit, Hometown Arcade. Submitting a request for a one-day liquor permit for a Siemens corporate event at Hometown Arcade, 61 Anticot Street, on Thursday, December the 5th, 2024, from 3:00 PM until 9:00 PM with approximately 60 guests expected. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carried. Five, nothing. Item 4.5, extension of hours, submitted by Jake and Joe. Submitting a request, Jake and Joe's, submitting a request for extension of hours for liquor service on Sunday, October the 20th, 2024, to accommodate a New England Patriots game being broadcast from London. The request seeks to open doors at 9:30 AM with liquor service beginning at 10:00 AM. Full brunch and dinner menus will be offered throughout the game.
Motion to approve.
Motion made, and seconded by Ms. Groh.
All the motions.
Any discussion? Mr. Lane?
Now that I have an issue with this, I think we usually grant an extension when we have like a boxing match or something like that. I don't think I've seen one like this. It's fine in terms of our...
Yes.
Okay.
Nobody's gonna go.
Okay, that was my only question. I hadn't seen something like this.
Yeah. Mr. Sad, I concur. It may be, it may be...
A long season.
A long season ahead. So with Mr. Lane's comment, the motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? You're unanimous. Why don't we take one more before we get into our 7 o'clock, it's the Recreation Department. Item 4.6, Recreation Department trunk or treat event. Requesting permission to use the municipal parking lot on Central Street for a trunk or treat on Saturday, October the 19th, 2024, from 8:00 AM until approximately 1:00 PM. The time request includes setup and breakdown. Do I have a motion? Ms. Lane, motion to approve. Ms. Groh, seconds. Any discussion? Get your costumes ready. It's almost Halloween. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You're unanimous. And at this point, we are just about at 7:00 PM. So with that, I'm going to move into item 3.2, which is a 7:00 PM public hearing with Mamas Incorporated. With that, Ms. Woodward, would you mind reading the public notice, please? And we'll invite the folks from Mamas to come on in.
...have been made to the licensing board of the town of Norwood for change of GBA from Mamas Incorporated, located at 175-179 Railroad Avenue, Norwood, Massachusetts, to Washington Number 7. Mary Lou Folon, Elias Kiki, under Chapter 138, Sec. 11 of the Massachusetts General Law Act of 1991, for the sale of all alcoholic buildings to the drunken premises of 175-179 Railroad Avenue, Norwood, Massachusetts. Public hearing on this allocation will begin on 20th of October 8, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Blackwood Chambers, 134, Norwood, Massachusetts.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Why don't we start off with introductions? Welcome back.
Thank you.
We're familiar with your faces, but reacquaint us, please.
Certainly. My name's John Paul Thomas, legal counsel for Mr. Kiki. To my left is Mr. Elias Kiki, owner and manager of record of Mamas Inc. and 175-179 Trumont, uh, railroad app, sorry. So we have before you a petition today for a name change from Mamas to Washington Number 7.
That's great. We have to give a little background on the name change. It's people are familiar with, but we have an opportunity to speak to it.
I'm gonna have Mr. Kiki address the board on this, since he's, this has been his...
So, Washington Number 7, I wanted to connect with Norwood a little bit more. And Washington Number 7 played a big role in the history of the formation of Norwood. It has to do with the public meeting house that they had in the late 1800s. It was over near the St. Catherine area, close to where the bar is right now. The public house is, was there, and they used that as a makeshift meeting house and fire station. And I thought it was appropriate to, to name it that because that's kind of the energy that I wanted there, a meeting house of, of people. At the time, this was South Dedham, and there was a tradition of ringing the bell on the Fourth of July. Maybe you're familiar with that.
Yes, I think many of us are.
Of course, of course you are. So, once they didn't want that bell rung anymore, that kind of was one of the driving forces behind forming the town. That story really resonated with me, and that's what I wanted to capture. And I wanted to set up the public house in that, in that spirit.
Thank you for the explanation.
Okay. Hopefully, that's what you were looking for.
It's exactly what we're looking for, in my opinion. But I'll open up our commentary from the board members. Any comments from the board? Mr. Sad, do you have a...
Welcome back. How are you making out the construction of the inside of?
Beautiful, beautiful. Very. Couple of appliances that we're waiting for that were a little bit backordered. We've had to cancel some orders, and then find anyone that has what we're looking for close by, and we've ordered that. The electricians and the plumbers need those last few pieces to come in in order to get the final inspections.
You're gonna have it, do you think, by Christmas?
I would, I would definitely hope so. I mean, we get surprised all the time, but, you know, towards the end of this month, the plumber has a deadline of the end of this week, so towards the end of this month, we should have everything kind of locked up.
Excellent. And that's it? No further questions, Mr. Chairman?
I think we do have on the agenda in December, I think it's the time to bring you, you guys back in for an update on, on, on the licensure, so we'll...
Hopefully, we'd love to come back. Hopefully, we won't need to. Hopefully, we'll be open by then.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to bring you back in. I think that's our, our process. But other, other questions from the board? Mr. Plasko?
I don't know if it's a question or a comment. Unless somebody is looking to have a name of their business on something particularly offensive, you can call it business, whatever you want. And that's what we're doing here tonight, changing the name of the operation. I know a lot of people, however, have heard that Mamas is coming and have been waiting for Mamas to come in.
What is it?
Mamas. Waiting for it to open. But it's probably yourself, ourselves, and a dozen other people that know what Washington 7 means. So I hope you're making a, not making a mistake from a business point of view. But if that's what you want, you got it.
Any other questions? Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just very quickly, you know, I think the name's pretty cool, so that's great. Throw some history in there. And like Mr. Sad, it'd be great for you to come back in December and say, we're ready to open. That's what we're really looking for, to have your, your all alcohol license put in use. So I'm sure you'll give us a good update in December, or you'll be open by then.
That's what I meant by...
Which would be even better.
That's what I meant by, we don't need to, we'll come back regardless. That's what you'd like. Hope, I'm assuming we're gonna be open by then.
Great.
Okay. We'll have an opportunity to revisit if necessary in December.
Great.
Ms. Groh, any comment?
No additional questions. Everything seemed straightforward to me. Good luck.
I'm sorry. I have a question, if you don't mind.
Yes.
What's the December date that you would be having a meeting on, just so that we can...
Ms. Woodward?
I know it's one of two.
The first meeting?
What's it, in December?
It's gonna have to be the 17th.
Then we just say we're just the 17th.
Yeah, we just change it to the 17th.
No problem. Thank you so much.
17th, yes.
Sorry to interrupt.
This is a public hearing, so at this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to speak on the matter before us, I will welcome to do so at this time. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion from the board.
Will we close the hearing?
Motion to close made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Ms. Lane. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, is unanimous. And I will entertain a motion from the board for...
Move to approve the application, name, change of name by the applicant?
A motion to change, to approve the name change made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Ms. Groh. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You're unanimous. Congratulations. We're welcome to number seven.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
Yala is right. Absolutely. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, now. We do have another appointment coming up in about, just a little more than five minutes, but in the interim, at 7:15, we have a few items we can get through in the interim. See, we left off at item 4.7. Department of Public Works, vehicle disposal, submitting a request to surplus a list of three vehicles that are in poor condition and unusable. Do I have a motion from the board?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Ms. Lane. Any discussion?
I just point information, or I guess, manager, on these, if somebody wanted parking for a vehicle they had, are we gonna put these out like just for...
We used to, we was on a bid site that we used to put out our municipal bids on.
Okay, all right. Perfect.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Seeing none? So I'm, I'm just pulling it up now. I'm just interested in what vehicles there are. Let's see. Yeah? You got one that goes back to 1999?
Nothing to want.
1999, okay. Thank you. With that, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Ms. Groh?
Second.
Plasko, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You're unanimous. And we'll go into, we still have a couple of minutes here. 4.8, Traffic Safety Advisory Committee Recommendations. Submitting recommendations from the Traffic Safety Committee. One, to place a no parking from here to the corner sign on both sides of Concord Avenue, approximately 40 feet back from the gutter line on Washington Street. Second, to install two-hour parking limit signs at all three parking spaces at Alavizos Park to eliminate long-term and overnight parking. Three, to direct the DPW to install a merge ahead sign on an existing pole on the northbound side of Napalm Street. We'll have a discussion, but I, maybe we're just going to discussion at this point. Any discussion on this before we, yes, Mr. Sad?
Just point information for the board and the manager. I met Sunday morning with a neighbor or two down there on that Concord Avenue. It's one of the worst streets to get out of in South Norwood, and it's a good thing, and I think they'll all be happy with us.
Thank you, Mr. Sad. Any other discussion on any of the three suggestions from the Advisory Committee?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Sad makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lane, second. On 4.8, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You're unanimous. There's a, item 4.9. We'll go through that before we bring in the 7:15 appointment. The board will recall that we did have, we did meet at last meeting regarding some requests for CPC pre-applications for several or three projects. We voted in favor of one associated with St. Gabriel's. The other two, we did not vote in favor at the time. The Historical Commission has sent in a, a follow-up letter with a suggestion regarding the town jailhouse that I did want to just review with the committee, with the board. This is a, a suggestion from Historical Commission, an email sent by Tony Yesko, and to form a subcommittee to discern the future use of the old jail and ask for submission of interest of residents to come forward who might like to serve on it. Committee members, board members have the, the information before you. I'm just looking for input on this particular suggestion. I know I have some thoughts, but I wanted to open it up for discussion by the board.
Chairman?
Mr. Plasko?
Yeah, I think it's starting to get a little old that we turn something down and it shows up at the next meeting. I think all or most at least of these points were made in our discussion previously, and there's nothing particularly new here. And so I would make a motion to file. You've already, already taken a position on that issue itself.
We'll make a motion, and if I get a second, we'll go into discussion.
A second.
And seconded by Mr. Lane. Mr. Lane, you had a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, my position is the same as it was at our last meeting. I think it's certainly something we can look at. I don't think it warrants a subcommittee, a formal committee, especially with a select representative. I don't know if people feel otherwise, but I would agree with Mr. Plasko on his position here. Would also note, even though that this pre-application wasn't approved, maybe it's the right word, by our body, the applicant did submit an application for consideration regardless to the Community Preservation Committee.
After I don't know?
After I don't know. So I just wanted to make a note of that.
We have to make sure the CPC knows our position.
Yeah, I'll make sure.
You're a member.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Otherwise, we, I could, I could notify CPC directly, but I appreciate that. Ms. Groh, any comments?
No additional comments. I was more curious about your feedback.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the motion as is. I, I don't, I agree with Mr. Lane. I think that establishing a committee, particularly one that, that, that we could have a member of the board attend, is, is not warranted at this time. I, I would be interested, and something Mr. Mazuko, you and I can talk about is, you know, I think it's worthy to have some discussion around use of the jailhouse some, at some point. Not necessarily through a CPC application, but, you know, I, I do see that perhaps there's some usage information that we could speak to or analyze that might involve the Historical Committee and might involve town, town meeting use or town, town hall use, or even a, other community organizations that may see some value in looking at the jailhouse as a potential room for other activities, whether they're cultural, historic, or artistic, or whatever. But I think that's just something that's informal. I don't believe we need to formalize it here. But, you know, personally, I would see benefit in having some discussion around what, if anything, there is of value with the utilization of the jailhouse. That's my two cents. Mr. Plasko's made the motion. Mr...
On the motion, I just, I've never been in it. I don't know what's in there.
It's a good thing.
I know that. I guess, just thinking, if I could just get in there and maybe see what's in there and maybe have a different view of it, to see what we can do with it, because it's, you just can't leave it empty all its life. It's gotta be some asset to be used that.
Yes.
Yeah, the majority of it is used for storage.
All right, yeah, if we can just get in there, I know where those come from.
Mr. Mazuko has...
He'll take me for the tour.
Ms. Groh and I gave us, we, we had a tour, and we actually were able to get up, which was the good news. But, yeah, we, 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 the opportunity to see the building, it's worthwhile.
Yeah, I'd like to point that out.
So on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You're unanimous. And at this point, I'm gonna invite folks from K Streets to come in for our 7:15 public hearing. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, a 7:15, not a public hearing, a common victueller. K Street license. I'll let the folks come in first. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. Yeah, there's a chair right there you can grab, right there on the, at the table. Yep, yep. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? So let me just read the agenda item. This is for a CB license for K Street. Submitting an application for a common victueller license for K Streets, formerly Perks, located at 685 Washington Street, Norwood. So welcome. Welcome. We have your application here, and this is an opportunity for, for us to get to know your, your organization, your plans for the location going forward. And then we'll have some, any questions from the board, and then we'll entertain a review of the license request. So by way of introductions, who wants to...
Sure. Happy to do so. My name is Stacy Lee. I'm counsel for the Boston K Street here. And to my right, Sam Lee, who is a partner of the company, and also he's a manager, who has been running the Korean restaurant up in Brookline, and also Malden. Basically, he has two restaurants right now. He's been running it for, running them for almost a decade. And prior to that point, he also had been running some other businesses as a manager back then. But now he owns two restaurants up in Boston, Brookline, exactly speaking of Malden. And the, right next to him, Esther Choi, and she is also a partner, and she's also gonna be a co-manager as well. And she had a cafe business in Korea, and then she, she had, she's gonna run this business as well, but then she is kind of a different way where she had an interest in design, and basically her hobbies were the collection of art and all that, so she has this great taste on it. So she's gonna focus on the outlook of the other companies as well. Basically, the company's south, I don't know if you picked up on that, it has Boston K Street. K represents actually Korean. So that's sort of the eastern, east coast, rather, eastern coast and the western coast, and quite known there. K culture, and K pop, K drama, K style, K food, and all that. We are hoping to bring in some, and infuse some of the taste of Korean-style pastry into this cafe business here as well. The idea of this cafe business itself is, you probably noticed that's right in the face of the town here, the central town. That's just 685, the Washington Street. Used to be a Perks coffee shop. In the context of this application, yes, it's gonna be a continuation of the cafe business there. So we're gonna offer coffee, and that's major and main item that we're gonna offer. But fundamentally, though, that's one thing. But then, because we do wanna secure the traditional style... But then, because we do want to secure the traditional style of a Mexican-style sandwich and pastry and muffins and all that. But at the same time, just as I mentioned, we're also going to include some of the taste of unique style of Korean style. Just infuse that into it and hopefully bring in more businesses and patrons with a different culture and background and all of that as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Welcome. Thank you for being here. I noticed on your application, you have the menu listed and the hours, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
So in terms of the previous businesses that were open there, I don't think they stayed open that late. I think you're prerogative to stay open as late as you're looking to. Just asking if this is a place, a business that you'd look to have, get an alcohol license in the future? Is this part of the business plan or?
If I may, yes, we do look into that. Not at this point, just that, I got to say this. And it's different, if you have a business up in Boston and all that, we probably have decent certainty of what, how the market is going to react to the food and all that. But at this point, we are not there just yet. We have, we probably have to make some trials and errors and all that, just to see just how the market is going to react to it and all that. So we don't want to have all that opportunity and possibility open. And that's one reason to, we think we're going to open until 11 o'clock. We may not at this point, because we don't know all that at this point. So rather just to want to secure some spot there till 11 o'clock and how that goes. And down the road, down the road, we may apply for the license and all that, but not there just yet. We're just going to see how that goes and all that. We probably make a decision, informed decision rather, as we go along. Yeah, that's where we stand.
No, that's great. I think that's a good approach. And I didn't, wasn't meaning to imply anything. It's just that there's a scarcity of them at the moment. In fact, there aren't any available, correct? So that's the reason I bring it up. So I hope you are successful and that you can expand, offer more of a menu in the future if things are going well. So.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your answer.
Thank you.
Mr. Sad?
What brings you to Norwood?
Oh, that's a great point. In fact, I got to start with this. I'm just completely honest with you. There's the spot there and there's on the market there. So he was leaving, the previous someone I was talking about, he, so basically put that business on the market. And my law practice, in fact, up in Boston, one place, and also I would have the satellite office down here in Stoughton as well, which is quite close to it. And she lives in Wellesley, and she's got, he's got the business up in, he lives in Newton. Yeah, he's got some business up in Brookline and all that. But I guess this is one of the things, Korean restaurants and Korean cafes and all that, it's a lot there up in Boston. None down here. So why not get it off here? Start it off right here.
Great idea.
So go from there, just to see where that's going to bring us. We are very hopeful and very positive. And we had heard a lot of good things about this town. In a way, it's conservative, very open, yeah, very open to the variety and diversity and all that. So we are really hopeful that we can be very successful here. I'm going to say this, members. Obviously, a business is making money. That's the, that's number one thing, obviously. But equally importantly, we also want to introduce something that is unique. This community has not tasted before, has not gotten the flavor of before. So why not do that? That's another thing. We all have jobs there. As a lawyer, as a CPA, I got my job. He's got two businesses running, a financial plan and all that. Like she's got the collection of art, and that's her designer, is a designer. She does all of that as well. But we just have our, those who have our personal interest here as well. Just bringing in some different culture, Korean culture and all that, because that's our background in a way. So why not do so?
Congratulations. A lot of great, different ethnic backgrounds are coming to Norwood. We love it. Welcome to Norwood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mostly just, thank you, Ms. Chairman, mostly just to welcome you and wish you a lot of luck. Everything made in order on the application and the menu looks great, so very pleased.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Plasko?
Just one for clarification. Mr. Lane always already brought up the hours you're looking for. Is that seven days? How many days? What days?
That's the, what we put on application, specifically, yeah, seven days. And basically, the hours they put in there, how much, just to clarify, you said how many days you were saying?
Yeah, you just put down 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
All day, yeah, seven days.
But is it two days a week, five days a week, seven days a week?
I think it says every day.
Every day, yeah.
Does it? What does it say there?
On the menu.
On the menu page?
Oh, on the menu. I'm looking at the application.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Menu could be anything. The prices aren't even on the. So, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I can remember the very first owner of Perks, taking over that building many years ago, twenty-plus years ago. And Mr. Plasko probably remembers what it was prior to Perks, but.
Perks was, prior to Perks for a million years almost, was a Norwood hardware?
Norwood hardware. So it was a hardware store when I was growing up here. So the gentleman came in, I think in the early 2000s, and converted that hardware store into a a really nice spot here in Norwood. And I'm very pleased that the, that tradition of restaurant service at that location is continuing. And I do wish you all the best in your new endeavor.
Thank you very much. Very much looking forward to it. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
So with that, any other questions? Mr. Lane?
I was going to make a motion.
That would be fine, Mr. Lane. Go right ahead.
Motion to approve. Second.
Ms. Groh, seconds. Mr. Lane's motion. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? No? Unanimous? I'm sorry.
Doesn't have to, anything, don't take influence as the vote at all. It's just curiosity. Did you say when you expect to be able to be open?
We have to paint inside, just make it look nicer and all that. So it's going to take a little bit of time, looking about a month from here on.
That's great.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at right now.
Thank you.
Wish you all the luck.
Thank you.
Welcome to Norwood.
I don't know whether it's appropriate or not, but definitely anything at all.
Yeah, I brought some snake. Crazy.
Oh, it's entirely.
It's not a bribe, by the way.
It's out to the past.
Thank you very much.
Glad you're welcome again.
I don't like to take these.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Ms. Woodward, that was unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. Cardoni, come on in. We're going to take you a couple of minutes early. How are you doing?
Very good.
Welcome.
Good to see everybody.
Good to see you too. I'll introduce the item 3.4, 7:30 PM equipment, but we're running a little early. So we'll get you in and out a little more quickly than we intended. This is Norwood Cultural Council for equipment by the board. Mr. Cardoni has put in a application which has the, to the Norwood Cultural Council. He's expressed an interest in joining the council. I understand you've been attending a few meetings.
I attended one of the meetings recently, yes.
So what we can do here is, Mr. Cardoni, many of us know you, some may not. So why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in the Cultural Council, and then we'll entertain questions from the board.
Sure. So a little bit about my background. I spent 25 years at Liberty Mutual, working as a meeting and event planner. Got to work in a lot of creative areas, doing that. During the pandemic, Liberty Mutual offered an early retirement package that was too good to turn down. So I took that and then tried to figure out what I was going to do with the rest of my life. Tried to do everything that I ever wanted to do if I had time. I settled mostly on some creative endeavors. One is photography. And I've helped around town on a few events.
A few big ones, to be clear.
Yeah. So I worked on the 150th, particularly the Boston Pops event. I've been teaching photography and selling my photographs and showing my photographs at several galleries and actually just rushing here from clearing out at the farmer's market where I have my booth. And recently started a project called the Peace Train Public Art Project. And I'm working with Peter Reynolds from Dedham. He illustrated the book Peace Train in collaboration with Cat Stevens. I had had an idea for this public art project many years ago. And I was inspired to present it to Peter when I saw that they had, that the book came out about two years ago. And we've been talking about it ever since. And this past spring, we decided that we were going to move forward with it. And it will require finding artists. We're going to have about 20 train car statues in the greater Boston area. Each of them will be decorated, designed and decorated by different artists. We're at the very beginning of that, this project. And I've had a chance to meet with their group and some people involved in the arts in Dedham. And I've spent some time doing gallery shows and working on programs with Mary Paz and some others around town. And I just enjoy the scene. I enjoy the people in it, and I want to be a bigger part of it.
Thank you, thank you. Questions from the board? Any observations, comments? It's Mr. and Ms. Groh. I'm sorry. I got to train my neck. This floor is yours.
There's so many more things on that side. I have no more information to look at. Thank you. So I just was curious, you know, what is an initial, I love this peace, peace train effort especially, but as a member of the Cultural Council, what are a couple of other initiatives that you'd be really excited about?
One, I've only attended one meeting, but I did hear about the flag, the the little art gallery. And I'm looking forward to working on that project in particular. And really just seeing what else is going on in the scene. I'm familiar somewhat with the South Norwood group. But I just, I want to meet some of them, and I want to see what they have going on and hopefully come up with some ideas of my own to share with the group. And, you know, maybe get some more gallery showings similar to what I've done at Tac Solutions where Susanna has a gallery set up. Maybe bringing in some more artists to that. I just agreed today to take part in the window decorating with friends of Norwood Center. I'll be photographing that officially for them. So I'm looking forward to that project also.
Excellent. Well, we really appreciate how much energy you're putting into the community. So very appreciative you've come in and speak with us tonight.
Yeah, it's unusual for me to be here at this time of year. I'm usually here in the summer for parades or other events. So I am looking forward to working with this group and the town on all of these initiatives.
Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you for your interest and for everything that you've done. Specifically, thank you for all you did for the 150th. I know you're heavily involved. We saw you everywhere. And, yeah, so thank you. A lot of tireless effort you put in.
It's my pleasure. I've mentioned before, I've worked on events around the world for Liberty Mutual for years. Big, small, all different types. And the Boston Pops was the most fun event, the most enjoyable to work on. And a lot of that had to do with all of you, with all the heads of the departments in the town. Everybody was so invested and excited about it. And that made it a pleasure and a very easy project. I enjoyed it very much.
Thank you for continuing to be involved.
Certainly.
We appreciate it.
Mr. Sad?
Thanks for coming up. My colleague, Matt, and I, same great ideas, welcome coming aboard. How many of you live in Norwood?
I'm a carpetbagger. I moved here when I was three in 1965. I do live in the house I grew up in there. My mother was born here, next door to where I live now. My grandfather moved here in 1918 to work for Governor Forbes. And so my part of town was all family at the time.
Good, good.
That I grew up.
Liberty Mutual, did you ever get your interaction with Gary Lea?
I knew Gary Lea very well.
I golf with Gary.
Oh, excellent.
Well, once in a while. I want to thank you. Congratulations. It's good to see people getting involved. And just don't forget South Norwood down the other strip, about the window painting and stuff.
I love South Norwood. I'm there every Friday morning for breakfast, so.
Where are you doing breakfast?
I'm with Jerry Miller.
With the boy.
Oh, the boy. The older crowd. Oh, sure.
I hope that's not a.
Yeah, the books.
I hope that doesn't make anybody change their minds.
No, no. Welcome aboard. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Any other, Mr. Plasko?
I'd just say that this gentleman has made himself so well-known to all of us and done such a well, good job for the community and the things he's gotten involved with, you could probably get anything you ask for. But I have some reservations after that last question, Mr. Sad, so I'm going to have to think about it.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Mr. Cardoni, you're being quite modest here. When you mention your work with the 150th Committee, I feel obliged to highlight it. You were the event manager for the 150th. And I don't know if people understood the logistics that were involved in putting the, all the activities associated with the 150 together, particularly the Boston Pops. I had the pleasure of attending several meetings with the planning committee. And you were always a solid rock there, the person who the committee could focus on and hear about step by step, what are the logistics that are needed in order to make this a successful event. And you demonstrated great patience and great organizational skills. And that event was a spectacular event and a credit to the kind of work you're capable of. So, and you will be a wonderful fit for the Cultural Council. I'm very glad to know you're applying.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that greatly.
With all these accolades, I think you're going to get a good motion here. But I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Mr. Lane. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it and looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You'll notice I didn't have to think long.
All right. We will return now to the main agenda, which we are getting our way through quite diligently here. We are now at item 4.1, which is free cash certification for discussion. I asked for this to be put on by Mr. Mizuko, just to give a recap of where we are. We have our free cash certification and perhaps discuss in relatively specific terms, what is the plan going forward for the upcoming October 24th town meeting regarding the use of free cash? So with that, would you, Mr. Mizuko, give us a recap of the free cash situation?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. We came in at a record high number for free cash. It came in at $29 million. Certainly a record for us. The bulk of that came, about $12 million, actually came from building permit surplus. So last year, both FM Global and Hospital permits, which at last fiscal year, they had just tipped into the start of fiscal year, made up about $12 million of that. Interest income, which just a couple of years ago was a few hundred thousand dollars at best off all the cash the town has, that came in at about $7 million. So that's the bulk of where the surplus came from. The end of the year last year with about four and a half million dollars in free cash. So the number is good. You start doing the math, you separate out, we transferred a couple of those things. Still a good number, but a historically high number that's not likely to repeat itself for a couple of reasons. One, I hope I'm wrong, but I don't think we're going to continue to do $12 million with the building permits in a year. Best case scenario, I am wrong. I can tell you that building permits have already started to slow down back to historically what used to be around a million dollars. The September number, I don't know if you looked at it, was something around $40,000, which is lower than it should be. So there really was a one-time bump. Interest income, one of the better decisions we've made in the last few years, when we borrowed from the middle school, we decided to borrow all the money upfront. As a result, is that sat in the town's coffers. It generated a fair amount of interest, which was good. That being said, going forward, the middle school opens in September, meaning that at some point in time, that amount of money isn't, isn't going to be there. The finance team led by Jeff O'Neal and Alex Hegarty have come up with a good projection for next year for interest going forward based on our cash. We're being a little bit more aggressive in how we manage our cash and making sure we're earning interest. That being said, we are not going to have that same amount of cash that we're sitting on going into next year. So out of that $29 million, it is important to know a couple of things. One, last year, when budget balancing approved a budget last year, there was an understanding, it's not required, but we looked at needing to use free cash to balance the budget this year. That won't happen until later in the spring, but that's a number that's probably in the $7 to $9 million range. $7 to $9 million range. And I'll talk about that separately if you want to get into the details of that. The capital plan calls for about $7 million worth of free cash. There's a deposit into the compensated absences fund that's a little over a million dollars, as well as we have a couple of smaller article items. And we of course need to save money for the spring, where we have not gone through the winter yet. I always want to caution everyone, we have had a number of mild winters. Our stone ice number, which used to eat up a lot of our free cash, was based on an average of the five years prior to the override. And excluding that 2015 winter, which was a little nuts. So we've had mild winters. What a bad or a difficult winter would end up being where costs have gone, I don't really know, so I was cautioning everyone for that. So a good one-time bump in cash that will come down, and obviously there's plans to use it. I always remind everyone, we don't have to spend free cash. It doesn't disappear. I know I say it disappears on June 30th. It doesn't really, as long as we don't have a deficit in the budget. It's just, it can stay right where it is. We don't want to put money into an account and have to take it right out of that account necessarily. That doesn't always look good for rating agencies. And I know there's always an urge to, well, we have some free cash, what can we do? And I just always urge caution. We have a budget to get through this coming year, we'll have a budget to get through the next year, the year after, and the year after. And the more cash we have, the better it preserves our flexibility. It's good to be able to pay for some capital items with cash. That's the program that's going forward for this year, but there'll be a capital plan next year and the year after and the year after. We do have a fiscal policy that always advises against using free cash to balance the budget or to supplement the budget. And that's generally a good fiscal practice. I think we have to be realistic that remembering it's taxpayer money. And so there's a bucket of taxpayer money over here. We're not going to say, oh, we're cutting your services over here while we're sitting on the cash over here. The way municipalities have to manage their finances is a little bit different, but it's hard to say, sorry, there's nothing to fund the services over here, but yes, there's a giant pile. And I refer to it as giant pile over here. It will go quickly, and we will probably return to our couple of million dollars in free cash every year where we have to be very cautious. So other than capital and looking at balancing the budget, which maintains our services over the next couple of years, I don't think we should look at anything crazy. Again, that number seems high. It is. It will go quickly when you take into capital, balancing the budget, and other obligations that we're going to have.
Plus, there is an article for general stabilization, use of free cash too.
Yes, so that's $2 million from free cash to stabilization, but we're using $2 million of Forbes money to pay for $2 million worth of capital. That's just a workaround. We worked out with DOR to get the money we originally set from Forbes. We're going to go into two different stabilization accounts. That's the mechanism to make it happen.
Thank you, Mr. Mazuko, for the recap. Are there any questions, comments from the board? Mr. Plasko?
Yeah, I have some strong disagreements with some of Mr. Mazuko's plans or comments about free cash and use of free cash. And he did mention to go quickly, and it will go quickly if we don't use it properly. But I don't think tonight's the night for an in-depth discussion of how we're going to use free cash. It's going to take a lot more forethought and discussion. But I did want to clarify if I could. The YO sheet went up and discussed our position on capital projects as being five to nothing. And that's accurate as to the vote we took, but I took the wrong vote in that I said I didn't want to belabor things. They already knew my positions, so I'm not going to discuss anymore. Let's move on. We're already running late. I should have voted no, so we recorded as unanimous, and that's okay because that's what happened. But I'm just clarifying the record that my personal position had been before that in this day, that a couple of those items shouldn't go forward, and the use, the extensive use of free cash, I am opposed to. So just for the public, those who might want to know, you know, most of those items are unanimous, but they're not entirely, and the recommendation of free cash is not unanimous. Thank you.
Yes. And you are correct, Mr. Plasko. I can recall both occasions over the summer, we talked about capital, like you made those points as well. And I do appreciate your continuing to make your viewpoint now. Thank you. Any other discussion?
One, as being a new member, do we still have a rainy day fund? The town maintains a general stabilization fund.
Yes.
That would be the general stabilization fund, which, $2 million of which is going in from free cash to, I'm sorry.
Into that account.
Into the account, whether it's Forbes or...
Correct.
So, yeah, and which is a good thing, Mr. Sad. That has been, that was a fund that as early as five years ago was well below the policy limit because some of that money had been used to borrow against, for the fund, for the building of the DPW building. But over the past seven or eight years, I think, at least the last five or six years really, been concerted effort made by all committees and Mr. Mazuko's office to build that fund up. So now it is more than the policy, you know, which 5% of general revenues.
General fund, yep.
Of funds, rather.
Right. It's north of $8 million. It's the best level it's ever been.
I think with this $2 million contribution, it will exceed $10 million, I believe. Okay, very good. Mr. Lain?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So the things that Mr. Plasko alluded to, he also spoke of last night, we had our first Budget Balancing Committee meeting in a while. It was a productive conversation, but it's obviously to be continued. We're meeting again next month. Just in terms of sort of where we're at, it's a historically high, right? And then actually the state website, I think it's the DOR website, you can see every town's free cash certification. You know, we're not entirely unique. There are some municipalities that have a pretty high percentage.
There are towns that historically generate a lot more than we do. Our number, if you were to take out the last two years, is like four to five million is kind of our average. There are towns that consistently with spending it are at 15 million, 18 million, 20 million.
Right. And so this is just out of my own interest. So, you know, I think I'd say like maybe Cambridge or some of those.
I would ignore Cambridge. They are in a category, they could buy a school with cash. They are a whole different category.
That's my question. It's sort of, you know, these municipalities that find themselves in a position where they have a large amount of free cash and it's not, you know, it's pretty normal for them. Are they paying for projects, you know, out of that?
Actually, so if we could take a moment to have a discussion, Mr. Chairman.
And I just want to say, I think it's good that we're talking about this now because this is going to be something that's...
Briefly, the AAA ratings out there tend to borrow more than we historically borrow.
Yeah.
So that's something we have to look at. Now, without getting into debate over this particular capital plan, Mr. Plasko and I have thought about it a few times. These are projects that would have to be borrowed on a shorter timeline, but when you're looking at, I mean, last year, I think the recommendation was to take a 30-year project and make it 20 years. We should be doing it over 30 years for a couple of reasons. One, you want to borrow the money, hold on to your cash. That's what the rating agents is going to do. That maximizes your financial flexibility. That's the best financial practice. Now, a fire engine and roads can only be 15 years. That's a bit of a pain in the butt. So philosophically, I fundamentally agree with Mr. Plasko. When we're looking at large projects, we should borrow them. You also want to spread the cost of that project out over the generation of taxpayers that are going to use it. La Coo's a perfect example. We have 70 years, it's going to be used for the next 50. You don't want to pay cash. You don't want to pay cash for that because you're taking today's money and using it today. That's going to be used over the next 30 years and spread it out over the next 30 years. There's a lot of things we've done in our budget in the last decade or so to generate free cash. We used to book sort of, call them phantom revenues, if you will. We would book chapter 90 as a revenue. It's not really a revenue. It lets it look like your budget is balanced. We had to pull that out. There were other items that we've pulled out that were no longer revenues. We've also built vehicles into the budget. We're spending almost a million dollars in vehicles in the budget. In the last five years, if we hadn't done that, that would have been about $5 million out of free cash. So where would we have been over the last couple of years if we hadn't done it? So we've been making these good sort of financial moves to make sure that we're generating free cash. Obviously, revenues coming in above projections generates the most free cash. We've tried to move our revenues to being a little bit more conservative. That our general policy is to project revenues at 90% of the last several years. You've got to make an exception there. Get building permits put up to $15 million, whatever it was last year. We're not going to project 90% of that because we're not going to make it. So you make those adjustments as you go forward to make sure you're generating free cash, which is just an operating surplus because it gives you the most amount of flexibility. Because the problem is, if you don't generate free cash, and you go into the negative and you go into the red, you have to make an adjustment in the middle of each year. Media budget adjustments are next to impossible to make without serious layoffs and service disruptions to staff. So that becomes a problem. So we've done better at that. What some of these towns do over time, they build their budgets to generate free cash because that maximizes their flexibility. We're getting there. We're doing better. We're sitting on a better year than we've had probably technically ever, but we know we have some gaps in the budget that are going to have to be plugged. That ties into the override that we did now six years ago. We said, look, we're going to do an override. It's going to guarantee the last five years before we have any service disruptions. We're now looking at, well, we got through year six, next year we'll be year seven. How long do we keep getting that out before we have to start looking at service disruptions? Because remember, even if we cut back on budgets and staff and services, the average taxpayer doesn't see a savings. You see, you know, even if we cut 50 positions, your tax bill's not really going to go down that much. So we don't want to cut people's services and they're paying the same amount of taxes. So putting it all together, we've done well at the override, managing it. How long do we want to kick that out? Because that just means, if the public votes for it, an increase in people's taxes. So is it good to balance the budget with free cash? No. If I could choose using free cash versus raising taxes, I'd say use of free cash. It is taxpayer money at the end of the day.
Mr. Plasko?
If I could answer the question as I heard it. I did this once before with the Budget Balancing Committee years ago, and I've recently been doing it, getting prepared for upcoming discussions of this nature. So I don't have the facts with me, but to lay it out to you generally, you can go to the Department of Revenue's website page, and if you take the towns that have AAA ratings, at least the four or five that I've looked at so far, and I think it's probably across the board, they maintain a reserve balance of like 29, 30 million, $28 million. Like we happen to have now, only because we fell into it. They've always had that. They always plan that. They always keep at least that mark. And when you look at the other end of the coin on the borrowing, they borrow probably three times what we borrow. And that's what bond and council look for too, how you're managing it and what the right way to do it is.
And those are similarly sized towns you're talking about?
Yeah, these are Wall Street, Arlington, Dedham.
AAA communities. Walpole's now AAA.
And they're all AAA towns.
Okay.
Thank you. Good discussion. I guess one thing we can pretty much rely on, this time next year, we won't be looking at $29 million in free cash.
I hope I'm wrong, but I don't think that's the case. Last I had Budget Balancing, that came up, somebody said, well, last year you said the number was better than, better than it would ever be. I really hope I'm wrong. I just don't think that's the case.
I have one more question. And you talked about building permit fees and FM Global and the hospital. Considering the hospital situation, there's no scenario where we would have to give back any kind of fee that's already been paid, right?
No. Once you pay your building permit fee, you've got a permit. That's the value of the permit.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think, weren't they also, weren't they anyhow getting those permits kind of by sections?
That's what I...
So it's like they haven't got the permit for the garage yet that hasn't been built.
Right. Like the hospital had to go to demolition permit first and then for the rest later.
But the bulk of those permits, the permit for the main cost, which is the main building, has been pulled. The outpatient service building will be a nice permit, but again, FM's project was half a billion dollars. I'd love one of those every year. I don't think that's going to happen.
I should mention that Mr. Palatier mentioned to me that if there are any members who are interested in perhaps going with him to FM in the future, he's welcome to tour. It's supposed to be a, from a building perspective, a fascinating building to watch, get erected. Open invitation from Mr. Palatier. Very well. That takes us through our new business agenda, and now we're into memorandum, section five, three items on our memorandum. What is the wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion to file.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Lain. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. And we now move into managers update. Mr. Mazuko.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Two staff updates I just wanted to give the board. We did have our new veterans agent start this week. We look forward to our, we hired a gentleman originally from Norwood, Derek Wintersbrand. We'll make sure the board gets a chance to meet him in the next couple of weeks, but he just started this week, and Teddy's already getting off to speed on his training. John Kinney, the rec superintendent, has left the town. He's taken position elsewhere, so temporarily Sam will be the assistant director. We'll be heading up that department for the foreseeable future until we can see what I want to do there. But we certainly appreciate Sam stepping up there. And then the last time I want to talk about just for a moment is our favorite topic, the hospital. I was a little disappointed with some of the news coverage today. I did call and chastise a few of the media stations for the way they reported the news today. It came out saying, you know, Norwood Hospital abandoned. And I said, you know, first of all, Stewart abandoned the project about a year ago, number one. Number two, they haven't actually done it there in four years. They were referring to the license, what we knew was happening, being pulled. Stewart isn't operating a hospital, so that was no surprise to us. There's no impact on MPT and their continuing construction of the hospital from some of the news stories today. I think it was just candidly bad reporting. But this is what happens sometimes with large media organizations, not great local media organizations that tend to do a little bit of research before publishing certain things. It was a surprise that four of their auxiliary outfits were closing, two in Norwood and two in Foxborough, particularly their cancer treatment facility in Foxborough. So that was disappointing, but not surprising given what Stewart has done. That's not necessarily going to have an impact on us per se, other than the continued degradation of healthcare in the region. But there's no impact on MPT's stated plans to continue moving forward. I think it was just a little bit misprinted, if you will. And that being said, at some point in time, my understanding is there actually will be a hearing in the next month on the Norwood Hospital closure, similar to what has happened at the other hospitals. I don't know if I'd call it a moot point at this point because it's been four years, but once I have more information on that, I'll be sure to let everyone know.
This would be a hearing that Stewart would need to have.
Correct. Correct. Nothing to do with us at the municipal level. I don't know the details of it, other than technically, when the license goes away, they're required to have a hearing. For us, it would be a little different than certainly maybe going to happen four years ago, I wish. But again, the hospital's already closed. They're not even owned anymore, so it would be a little strange, but stay tuned.
Yeah, keep us apprised. I believe that that would be a relatively interesting hearing for residents to know about and to attend.
Sure. We'll keep you posted as I learn more.
Now we're moving to, you have a question for Mr. Mazuko?
Just a question for the manager. I know that Stewart owns a few condos across the street at Guyo Medical.
Yeah.
Any information on what we're going to do with those? Who's going to pick them up? Bankruptcy?
Haven't heard on those yet.
Okay.
That, I'm not well-versed in this, but I believe that that separate Stewart Medical Group is a subject of also an acquisition. I don't know if it's been finalized yet, but I believe there have been, there have been some interest in another group to acquire the medical group there, but I'm...
And that building is a lot, there's some independent medical, commercial office condos in there, so maybe what Stewart has and what they don't have is a little...
I think they own 51%.
Yeah, and one of the, one of the facilities that is among the four that you mentioned, Mr. Mizuko, is the X-ray facility in the Gail. Is one of those four that is closing unfortunately.
I asked a question also, is it owned by Stewart or by MPT?
Well, that's what my question is, who would own that?
It's, I have no idea, to be honest. Some of those, that building is independent office condos, I know at different times, there have been swaps, there was a point where a Stewart office doctor was renting from somebody else, so it's as complicated as the whole budget process.
Yeah. I know my physician is a member of the Stewart Medical Group, and I've asked him occasionally, what is he hearing about the future of the Stewart Medical Group, and he has no more information than we have publicly, so, which is consistent with the information we get in regard to the status of the hospital, so, which Stewart does no longer own, so. I do want to acknowledge and thank MPT for, and subject construction, for hosting a recent tour. Mr. Sad was able to attend, Mr. Mizuko of the hospital facility, and we do appreciate having the opportunity to see the facility. If anyone else on the board is interested in visiting, Mr. Mizuko, I think they can let you know, and I think they'll be gracious enough for another tour. I'm going to go to Sleckman's addenda, starting with Ms. Groh.
Will I steal your thunder if I talk about the Norwood?
No, but right ahead. Yeah, I put it away, because I figured you were, you wanted to...
Thank you, all right. So first item I want to let the public know about as a reminder, is the Wellness Fair, which is going to happen on November 2nd, and that'll be from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Norwood High School. This is a free event, and there's going to be informational booths, you know, we're trying to really focus on getting information out there and resources for people in terms of, you know, just general wellness. This is basically the, between the school department and Impact Norwood, we're trying to get a lot of good information out there for families and for residents, but we're also going to have a lot of activities at this Wellness Fair, so there will be food, there will be games, this is a family-friendly event, so do feel free to come out for that. Then my second item is more of an update for us. Mr. Plasko and I have been meeting periodically, talking about goals for the board, and so at this point, and we've had a couple of meetings ourselves, we've received input from the managers, you can put from the chair, so I'm going to be compiling that into a digestible document that translates all of our scribbly notes into something that the board can review. So I should have that for you this weekend, the hope would be that you get time to digest that, so that we can have a more deep discussion at one of the upcoming meetings.
That's great. Thank you, Ms. Groh. Mr. Plasko.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few this evening, actually. First, I'd like to start by acknowledging the passing of a member of our town government family, Will Krasnow. Mr. Krasnow was a longtime member of our human resource, well, not the human resource department, but the personnel board, working with the human resource. And before that, he worked on the committee that brought the formation of the human resource department to the town, to town meeting. He's been on other activities in the town, and he's always a gentleman, and he's a town meeting member all these years. I know Mr. Sad and myself met him when we were young men, as members of the JCs, that you hear Mr. Sad mention often, and Mr. Krasnow was a member of that organization as well. And he's just a fine gentleman, and we're going to miss his contributions to the community and to his wife and extended family condolences. Speaking of passing unfortunately, our policy on pre-purchasing cemetery lots, I have an email a gentleman sent me, 89 years old, born in Norwood Hospital, and still lives in Norwood, trying to get their affairs in order, as we get a little older, we start thinking about these things, and it kind of runs, I never thought of this before, because I was always supportive of no pre-purchase policy, but I think, not speaking for anyone else but myself, I never really thought about, at the end, when people are really trying to make arrangements and take care of things, how that stymies them, and is one big thing that's on their mind at that point in their life, that can't get taken care of. I wonder if we could ask the manager, maybe speak Mr. Ryan, others, if there isn't a kind of an end-of-life policy that we couldn't come up with that would make an exception? Because I think part of the policy, not having people pre-purchase, they purchase it, they leave, move out of town, move out of state, pass away, never come back, that lot's never used, and since they're empty, and that's, you know, kind of the main point. That's not going to happen with people that are still here, so close to when they are going to need that, that lot, and, you know, maybe if they show that they've got terminal illness from doctors, maybe if they show that they pre-bought cemetery real, that they absolutely intend to be buried here, I don't know what it might be, but it seems to me, and when I got his email, it hit me, that maybe we've missed out, and maybe we can't find something that would accommodate it.
You know, I would certainly look into that, I can get back with the board some recommendations. Just off the top of my head, I wonder if there's a way to do something where, you know, if a year after somebody's passed, if they're not buried there, that the lot reverts to the town? Because that, to your point, that's always sort of been part of the concern, and every now and then, we have somebody that calls us that says, hey, you know, Grandma bought a lot, you know, 40 years ago when we used to allow it, and she's buried in Arizona, we want to sell this back, and it's, we generally don't do that. But if you're in good faith, wanting to be buried there, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, maybe that's something we can do to make sure we protect our interests, that, hey, well, you did decide to go somewhere else, it reverts back to the town, and we still have a lot that we can reuse. You know, somebody's owed a little bit of money, but you've already decided you're out that money by going somewhere else, that's something, and candidly, what's also happened when we used to allow it, is somebody, one of the fellows passes away, and it's a double lot, and then they remove, they get remarried, or they just, they bought it for, lots of things happen, but we can certainly see how we could come up with a solution.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Sooner the better, in case we come up with one. Thank you. The other thing is, a few meetings back, I brought up the idea of the board maybe wanting to get involved in different issues, technical policies, maybe something as broad as like housing, and whether we did it ourselves, or presented it to the master plan committee that's, I guess they're now the, what is the name now?
Comprehensive Plan.
Comprehensive Plan Group. And part of that was, I had seen an article in the National Law Review regarding zoning that I thought would affect, could potentially affect even a policy I was looking at promoting, which was acceptance of further, broader use of the Chapter 40 Act program in the state. So, anyhow, authorized to talk with the town council, I sent an email to town council, and others at his firm reviewed the matters, and I left a copy on your desk tonight, it's really involved to discuss in any detail, so I won't do that tonight, but I'll just point that at the end of it, given these legal developments, municipalities should proceed cautiously while considering inclusionary zoning initiatives to ensure compliance with statutory boundaries. That doesn't mean we can't, that means be smart, know there's an issue out there, and take it all into consideration as you move forward carefully. I did bring a copy of this down and have a very brief discussion as well with the Stixxon Down and Planning, so they have this. Thank you. The other matter is, Mr. Chairman, you brought up about with the capital outlay and financial policies of the town, changing a draft to make some change, I had asked for some delay on that, and I thought we were going to be talking about a few meetings, like a couple of meetings ago, so I sent out an email, or printed out some comments that unfortunately were just, if you go to paragraph 6, you might want to change this, you might want to change that, obviously very hard to follow, but I wanted to get it in, in the timeframe you had allowed me, but since it went a little longer than that, I actually put those comments into a full readable draft of what the suggestions I had made would look like, if that was the policy versus the one that exists versus the one that you had brought to us as an amendment. So whenever we take it up, it is on your desk tonight, and it's just one other, one other person's input as to a policy we might want to consider. I think that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko, thank you for all the information. Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Plasko, for those things you brought up and seeing it. And we had talked about in Budget Balancing last night about the capital plan, so...
Yes.
Appreciate you coming up. Just wanted to quickly mention, for parents who may have children, at the middle school, there's an open house tomorrow night, I believe, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. I'll be there. And I just want to additionally thank my wife, we celebrated our, who does not work in the health department, by the way.
Yeah.
Celebrating our 17th anniversary yesterday. Two days ago.
Congratulations.
I got it wrong.
To both of you, congratulations.
Yes, mostly for allowing her, allowing me to do these things, so I appreciate it. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lane, and congratulations on your, I'm not going to do the 17th, that's like, reminds me of how young you are.
It was on Sunday.
Sunday, the 6th.
Yeah.
That was also the anniversary of the town of Norwood adopting the general managed former government in 1914, October 6th.
See, now you have two things to celebrate, going forward and just going in.
I think I know which one's more important. I think I know which one's more important.
When do you get the town of Norwood for that anniversary? It's more than flowers, I would think, yes.
Stamp or something.
Yes. Mr. Sad.
Well, my colleague Matt Wayne, his 17th anniversary, mine was on the same day.
Oh, nice.
34 years. My wife and me, and we had a great dinner in Boston to pick up our sister Lisa, and it worked out great, but I want to thank and congratulate the Norwood Golf Team, they made the tournament. The field hockey team's doing great, they're 10-1-1. Allison Dolan is off to a great start again, and hopefully she brings the state tournament home this year. And a shout out to Christian McIntyre, I coached this guy in football, young kid, 8th grade, great athlete, great smart kid, he's a Siberian now, he was on the Globe on Saturday, they won, they're undefeated over there, and I think they lost one game, but he's National Honor Society Player of the Week, just a super kid from Norwood, I want to shout out to him. And then also, I want to shout out to my golf team, Tuesday night, we won the club championship, Wolf Country Club, Chris Malouf and Gene Rado, congratulations for carrying the team while I was at my meeting. And as Bill mentioned, Marcy, our condolences from all the JV friends in the JC world. I knew Will for at least 20 years, so condolences, as Bill mentioned, from the entire board. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sad. Just a couple of items for me as well. We had an approval earlier, but just to give another shout out to the trunk of treat event by the rec department over here in the municipal parking lot on Saturday, the 19th, from 8:00 AM until 1:00 PM. So keep that in mind, Halloween is upon us. I would also, just today, or just last night, I believe, we received some documents from, associated with 20, the 20 Vernon Street Project. These were documents that were requested by the Finance Commission, who, they are meeting on Thursday. The documents have been received by our board members as well. As you recall, our last meeting, we determined that we would also like to have an opportunity to review those documents in advance of the town meeting on the 24th. So we do have an opportunity on October 22nd meeting, to have our opportunity for us to consider the documentation, and at that point, we will schedule a vote to consider our position on that particular town meeting article. Seems like that's well timed for the town meeting coming up. I would also like to just say condolences to Finance Commission member Alan Slater and our town moderator Jerry Slater for the passing of Jerry's mother Shirley. So I, on behalf of the board, send our condolences to the Slater family. And I too would like to just make note of the contributions that Will Krasnow made to the town of Norwood. As Mr. Plasko indicated, Will was a member of the Personnel Bylaw Committee, which Mr. Plasko, myself, and Susan McQuaid were on, and probably more than 20 years ago. A bylaw committee that actually established the very first HR department here in the town of Norwood back in the early 2000s, and Will was a very good employment lawyer, those of you in Town Hall will recognize that, he was a relatively frequent speaker at town meeting, his lawyer training always in play, very logical, very civil discussion, we're all going to miss Will, who I also served on with the Personnel Board, that was established by the bylaw back in 2003, I believe, and Will had been a member of that board from day one, and he will be missed, and our condolences to his wife Marcia and to the Krasno family. Norwood has lost a wonderful volunteer, and he will be missed. With that, that's all I have for this evening, and with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Lane, seconded by Ms. Groh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.[1758.89]